Good evening and welcome. I will call the Yakima City Council. A business session of April the 15th, 2025 to order, please. Thank you. Start with roll call? We have people talking.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Byers.
Present.
DeCio.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy. Here. Thank you. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll have interpreter services.
Good evening, George. Language connection. Si alguien necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, les comento que tengo aquí el sistema y estoy disponible para hacerlo. Gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comment. There will be 35 minutes allotted for a public comment this evening. Each person will have two and a half minutes at the podium. When you come to the podium, first of all, if you want to make a public comment, make sure you fill out a form in the lobby and give it here to the city clerk. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and the city in which you live. The first person on the list is Yazu, the son.
My name is Yazu. I'm the son of God's King Cleopatra in the flesh. This is a revelation. I'm from Yakima. This is a revelation from Yazu. God gave it to him to show those who serve God what happened soon. God made it known by sending an angel to a servant, John. John is a witness to everything he saw, what he saw is God's word and what Yazu has said. Blessed is the one who reads out loud the words of this prophecy. Blessed are those who hear and think everything it says is important. The time when these things become true is near. Praise to God. I, John, am writing this letter. I'm sending it to the seven churches in Asia Minor. May grace and peace come to you from God. She is the one who is, and who was, and who will come. May grace and peace come to you from Yazu. He is the faithful witness, so what he has shown can be trusted. He was the first to rise from the dead. He rules over the kings of the earth. The revelation is given. Glory and power belong to Yazu, and that's me on this planet. It's me. He set us free from our sins by pouring His blood out for us. He has made us members of His royal family. He has made us priests who serve His God and mother. Glory and power belong to Yazu. That's me on this planet. Amen. Look, He's coming with the clouds. Every eye will see Him, even those who pierced Him will see Him. All the nation on this earth will mourn because of Him. Zechariah 12 verse 10. This will really happen. Amen. I'm the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end, says the Lord God. I'm the God who is and who was and will come. I don't want to tell the king descended something. You tested those nuclear weapons. Not only have you took this planet on its axle, you messed up other planets in its orbit. That moon was a planet with species on it. They're gone. That's how it would have of a planet. That big old ball of fire, that was a planet with entities on it. It's gone. So was Mercury. So was Mars. So Cain descended the sins of Abraham. You're in deep trouble if you don't repent. So not only have you been killing billions of people on this planet and your God's people, you've been killing people on other planets and you destroyed other planets. So I hope you realize you're no longer in power. Your power was being taken away from you. You're under the judgment, and I hope you hear me good. Your end is near, so I hope you repent for your family's sake. I hope you repent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Shelley White.
I'm Shelley White, coming tonight as a private citizen of Yakima, not as a member of the planning commission. But tonight, I want to briefly recap. We have now reviewed the nuts and bolts of the new Washington State housing laws, eliminating single-family zoning in the entire state, and we have begun connecting dots and looking at the roots of the new laws. Two weeks ago, we looked at the severe decline of the US population, and last week, we looked at what has been done in the last few years to replenish our population, labor force, and tax bases. The elephant in the room, immigration. Now, we want to continue to follow the money and look at one of what I called last time, the two giant gorillas in the room, but I'm renaming gorilla number one a giant whale this week for our next discussion. And tonight, we're going to look at the whales attending suckerfish. You know, the ones that attach themselves to the whale and get a good ride. So who's attached to the giant whale and supported the passage of these new laws? And who gains from them? In addition to all the state and local tax treasure chests that will be substantially increased, including those relying on property taxes, which powerful lobbies or PACs were instrumental in passing the new laws? The first is obvious, the realtors that helped get the laws passed. Also obvious are the 10 to 20 million additional non-US citizens that can now buy property, putting the law of supply and demand into startling effect and assuring realtors that they will have inventory to sell and rent for many years to come. Realtors have also been under immense pressure lately as the National Association has lost several high-profile lawsuits attacking the way in which commissions are paid. Getting these state zoning laws passed also assures the Realtor associations that they retain a strong membership base in the future. Who else benefits? Well, COVID slowed new housing starts to accrue, and they still haven't completely recovered, so it stands to reason that home builders' associations and construction suppliers would love to have more to build immediately and long-term. Then, of course, banks and mortgage lenders are going to profit from a long, steady supply of new construction, condo, and multifamily loans as our title companies. And let's not forget the fair housing folks that are absolutely delighted that those who have long been discriminated against can finally gain access to more desirable neighborhoods. Unfortunately, they also erroneously believe the new laws will provide a treasure trove of more affordable rentals and more affordable housing purchase opportunities for marginalized peoples in the future. But will this actually be the case? Let's keep connecting dots and follow the money to the giant whale next time.
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone online who'd like to address the council this evening?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you. So we will end the public comment section. We'll move to item agenda five, which is an open discussion for the good of the order. We have two proclamations to read this evening. The first is a proclamation for National Day of Prayer, and I will be reading that proclamation. Is Mark Grange here tonight or somebody representing Mark Grange here tonight?
I don't see him.
I don't either.
Well, we can still read it.
Okay, I will read it. City of Yakima proclamation. Whereas on April 17th, 1952, the Congress of the United States approved the joint resolution to provide for setting aside an appropriate day as National Day of Prayer, Public Law 8232466, stat 64. And whereas the history of our nation is indelibly marked with the role that prayer has played in the lives of individuals and in the nation; and whereas historically our greatest leaders have turned to prayer in times of crisis and Thanksgiving; and whereas the virtues of prayer reflect a common bond, hopes and aspirations, sorrows and fears, remorse and renewed resolve, thanks and joyful praise and love; and whereas May 1st, 2025, is being deemed by Congress as a national day of prayer where all Americans are to pray in their own religious way for the leaders of our nation; now therefore I, Patricia Byers, Mayor of the City of Yakima, on behalf of the Yakima City Council, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2025, as National Day of Prayer in the City of Yakima. In keeping with the wishes of the Congress of the United States, I urge all citizens to join me in the special observance due to this 15th day of April, 2025. The second proclamation is America's 250th anniversary. And Deputy Mayor Matt Brown is going to read this. Do we have Liz? Come forward, Liz, please. Come forward to the podium. You'll have an opportunity to say a few words after we read the proclamation.
You can take a picture if you...
Oh, you can take a picture. Yes.
Yeah.
You can do that now.
Yeah, go for it. Okay, I'm going to start. Whereas the City of Yakima recognizes the importance of honoring and commemorating the 250th anniversary of the founding of our nation and reminding our citizens of the vital significance and relevance of our founding principles and ideals that created a unique national identity worth fighting for. And whereas the events of 1775 that began the revolution the year before independence was declared are significant moments that signaled the creation of a national identity and unity of purpose that transcended traditional geographic, cultural, and societal divides. And whereas individuals and communities across all colonies came together to support their fellow countrymen. And whereas on the evening of April 18th, 1775, with impeding hostile action from the British Army in Boston, Massachusetts, Paul Revere and William Dawes, along with other alarm riders, undertook a perilous ride to alert everyone in the countryside of the coming danger. And whereas preceding their departure from Boston, a pre-arranged signal was set in the Old North Church's steeple to ensure that the message got out and did not solely rely on just one or two alarm riders. And whereas the two lanterns that were the signal were immortalized in Henry Wadsworth's Longfellow's poem, "Paul Revere's Ride", as one if by land and two if by sea, and have become an enduring symbol of American vigilance, perseverance, and preparedness in the face of adversity. Whatever. Whereas those alarm riders and the citizens that answered the call to arms to serve and defend their fellow countrymen that night and the following day at the battles of Lexington and Concord exemplified the spirit of community and shared responsibility that has defined our nation since its inception. And whereas we are reminded 250 years later that the call for unity and the call to serve each other is no less relevant today than it was then. And whereas the national initiative has been proposed through collaboration from multiple states and that two lights be displayed in public spaces across the country for all to see the marking, see marking that significant anniversary in April 2025 and the beginning of the 250th anniversary commemorations leading up to the Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 2026. Whew, this is a wordy one. Now, therefore, I, Matt Brown, the Deputy Mayor of the City of Yakima, on behalf of the Yakima City Council, hereby endorse the two lights for tomorrow, national initiative, and call on all citizens to unite in remembrance of our shared history, honoring the sacrifices made by those who fought for our independence and reminding ourselves of the values we hold dear today.
Well, thank you. I'm Liz Hobson, the Executive Director of the Yakima Valley Museum, and I'm here representing the Washington State Historical Society and the Washington State America 250 collaboration. So we thank you for recognizing this significant event and really do look forward to starting this celebration in 2026 and looking forward to partnering with the City of Yakima. So thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations on your fairly new job.
Oh, yes, yeah, a year and a month.
All right. Next on the agenda is council reports, and I don't believe we have any this evening. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Items listed are considered routine by the city council and will be launched by one motion without discussion. A council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, and if approved, it will be placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Does any council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Well, I will then. I would like to remove item E, F, G, and H.
Wow. That's a big one. Yeah. That's a lot. All right.
Would you read the consent agenda, please?
Item 7A is approval of minutes from the April 1, 2025, City Council regular meeting and April 8, 2025, City Council study session. Item B is 2025 first quarter treasury report. Item C is approved payment of disbursements for the period March 1 through 31, 2025. Item D is project completion and contract acceptance for Granite Construction Company for Nob Hill Boulevard 4th to 15th Granite Overlay Project 2793. Item I is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the commercial lease agreement between the City of Yakima and the Greater Yakima Chamber of Commerce for property located at 10 North 9th Street in Yakima. Item J is a resolution ratifying the declaration of an emergency, declaring an emergency existed, and authorizing the city manager to execute all applicable documents for the repair of Fire Truck 91, EPO 2502E. Item K is an ordinance amending the 2025 through 2026 biennial budget for the City of Yakima and making appropriations from unappropriated fund balances within various funds for expenditure during 2025 for various purposes, including 2024 encumbrances as described in attached schedule I.
Thank you.
No, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman DeCio to approve the consent agenda as read. And we will lead a roll call vote, please.
Bird?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
DeCio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
All right, the motion is 7-0, and the resolutions are adopted, and the ordinance is passed. Right. So we're going to go back, and we're going to visit item 7E, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Yakima Pickleball Club for the use of pickleball courts at Franklin Park. This has no budgetary impact, and our Director of Parks and Rec, Ken Wilkinson, is here to talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So for your consideration, we have before you an agreement with the Yakima Pickleball Club. Parks and Rec has had an ongoing relationship with the Pickleball Club since 2019. The Pickleball Club came to us and said, "We want to help construct pickleball courts in Yakima." Some of you remember that our courts at Franklin Park were in terrible shape. They came forward with over 600 hours of volunteer time and over $10,000 for parts and equipment and materials to convert those three tennis courts on the north side of the park into eight pickleball courts. And in response to that, we entered into an agreement with them in the past to give them priority use for their club's usage. That's the agreement that you have in front of you. Tonight is a re-up of that agreement, and it has for you to consider four courts of the eight that they can use Monday through Sunday in the morning and then again in the evening. We will reserve four courts for general public play, and we also have the three tennis courts to the south of these pickleball courts that can be utilized as six pickleball courts for the general public. One of the great things about the Yakima Pickleball Club is they just didn't give a little bit of money and then volunteer their time to create them. They are ongoing with their volunteerism, whether they're filling cracks in the courts, repainting the lines, or just doing general cleanup maintenance. So we want to continue to partner with them and allow them to use these courts at these times. The other great thing about the Pickleball Club is they're not exclusive. They want people to join. They want more people to be involved. And from all levels, whether a very, very beginner or someone who may be a very, very established player. So that, to me, means a lot for this community. Their membership fee per year is just $40, and people can join. And even if people are there and they're not even familiar with the Pickleball Club, they will include them, which is great. They're a great bunch. Hopefully, some of you know some of them. We enjoy working with them, partnering with them to provide these pickleball courts and these leagues and things that they put together for our community.
Thank you. I just want to comment that it's becoming a growing sport of interest, and it's good to see that it's happening in our community.
It is. One of the challenges that we do have is there's demand for more and more courts, and that is an ongoing issue. One of the problems that we have sometimes in the evening is that there's too many people who want to play pickleball, and they have to take turns.
They have to share.
They do.
We learned that in kindergarten. How do we share, right? Okay. Clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Yakima Pickleball Club for use of Franklin Park pickleball courts.
I move to pass the resolution.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. A motion by Councilman DeCio, a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to adopt the resolution. We'll need a roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
DeCio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
I think the vote is 7-0, resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. We'll move on to item 7F, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Yakima Youth Golf Association on the First Tee Program. This also has no budgetary impact. And Mr. Wilkinson has talked to us about this as well.
So again, for your consideration, this is a continuation of the agreement that we had with them last year. We've had an ongoing partnership with the First Tee for many, many years, teaching kids how to play golf, but not only playing golf, but also building character. And that's one of the things I really appreciate about the First Tee, that they are working with kids to help them manage their emotions. And if any of you play golf, you know that you do need to manage your emotions, both good and bad, and then also just building character and learning to resolve conflicts, problems, and working with others, and good sportsmanship, and all of those kinds of things. So the First Tee Program has asked to utilize the golf course Tuesdays and Thursdays during the summer in the practice area and then in our hitting net. So they're not going to be on the course taking up holes for the public, but they will be there learning how to play the game and, of course, building those character abilities and skills as well. And for that, we only charge them $2. So they're not playing the course, but they are utilizing the course. So $2 per kid to be able to be in that program. Again, we want to keep that as low as we possibly can, building the sport, and, of course, working with programs, recreation programs for children in our community. So this agreement is for your consideration tonight in an ongoing great partnership with a great organization.
So thank you again for sharing a great opportunity, especially for youth in our community. We'll need to have the resolution read, please.
This is a resolution approving the agreement between the City of Yakima and the Yakima Golf Organization, also known as the First Tee of Yakima, for use of Fisher Park Golf Course for certain youth golf activities.
We'll take a roll. Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman DeCio and a second by Councilman Herrera to pass a resolution, adopt a resolution.
Byers?
Yes.
DeCio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So motion passed at 7-0, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Next is item 7G, a resolution authorizing an affiliation agreement with Central Washington University to provide clinical learning experiences and facilities for students. Again, this has no budgetary impact.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Aaron Markham, Fire Chief. I beat you to the introduction.
You did.
So this resolution is to establish an affiliation agreement with Central Washington University. As you may know, they both have paramedic programs that they teach students to become paramedics and provide pre-hospital care. And because of Yakima's call volume on EMS calls, they reached out to us and wanted us to be affiliated with them for educational purposes. So this agreement allows them to do ride-alongs as they reach the end of their program and get to observe and participate as much as we allow them to do, you know, as observing and stuff like that, so they can complete their final stages in becoming certified in their trade.
Thank you. And I just want to say, having served an internship in a different field, finishing my college degree, it's just a wonderful opportunity to get some hands-on experience before you move ahead. So thank you.
Yeah, we felt that this agreement is, you know, one of your strategic priorities of engage Yakima, and so that was one of the reasons we wanted to engage them and be in partnership with us.
Good work on that. Thank you. Would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution authorizing an affiliation agreement between Central Washington University and the City of Yakima Fire Department to provide clinical learning experiences and facilities for school students.
I move to adopt the resolution.
A second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman DeCio to adopt the resolution. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
DeCio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes. The vote is 7-0, and so the resolution is adopted. Thank you. I think you're going to stay up, aren't you, Chief? For the next one? Okay. The last one is 7H, which is a resolution authorizing an inter-agency agreement with the Department of Natural Resources. And we just don't know that one, please.
Okay. So this resolution is to establish... We already have inter-local agreements for responses through DNR, but this is through their wildfire prevention division of DNR. And what we're entering into this agreement will allow them to provide educational material in the form of signs that you will see. Normally, you'll see these like in the forested areas where it educates the public on what the risk of wildfire is at the current time, whether it's low to moderate to high risk. And we're going to put those in certain areas of the city that are visible by the people that are, you know, commuting throughout. And the other part of that... And these signs will have both DNR and City of Yakima Fire Department logos on them as far as the educational piece. But we've also wanted to kind of... In the efforts to conserve water at some of our fire stations, Station 93, if you're aware, has a lot of grass around it. We wanted to reduce that and do some zero-scaping with drought-resistant type vegetation. So we reached out to have them help us design what good landscaping would be that uses less amounts of water, but also provides kind of an educational walkthrough so you can see how you could landscape areas of your house that might be in the wildland urban interface area that would keep your house safer from wildfires should one happen. And so part of that's going to be... We will buy a lot of the materials as far as the plants and stuff, and they will reimburse us for that. The project's due to be in by the end of June of this year.
Awesome. Thank you. Clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution authorizing an inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Natural Resources and the City of Yakima for reimbursement for community wildfire reduction and education efforts.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Who goes and changes the risk level on those signs?
They're going to give you the job.
Yeah, in the middle of the night.
They're going to give you the job.
Is that your job, Chief?
They're going to be right next to a fire station staff 24 hours a day. So kind of like when the flags go to half-mast, we'll change the, you know, the fire...
Every time I see those signs, I'm like, "Who comes out here in the middle of nowhere to change that thing?"
They should make them electronic.
Like a reader board.
There you go.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I move to adopt the resolution.
A second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman DeCio to adopt the resolution. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
DeCio?
Yes.
All right, that's a 7-0 vote, and so the resolution is adopted. And Chief, just let me say, thank you. I'm looking forward to walking through and learning about some of the heritage plans.
You're very welcome.
Yeah. All right. So we are done with public... So we are done with public, I'm sorry, with consent agenda, and we're moving down to item eight, which is public hearings. We have no public hearings this evening, so we will move now into department items. The first is item A, Capitol Theater Multi-Year Capital Improvement Plan. And the Executive Director of Capitol Theater and City Community Development Director, Bill Preston, are both here to talk about this.
Over time, you'll figure it out.
Yeah, I know.
One title, I hope.
I keep working on it, yeah.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know what he's doing back there.
He's miming for you.
So, so this is, this is an awesome opportunity for me, right? I don't get a chance to present with Charlie very often, or maybe ever. Yeah, ever.
First time ever?
First time ever. But we do have a partnership, which is what I want to present here today. So Charlie approached me, I don't know, a couple of years ago, and said, hey, I've got all this stuff that needs to happen out at the Capitol Theater. And I don't know how to do it, because it's all capital improvements, right? And we didn't hire him to do capital improvements, we hired him to run the theater, right? So we've been working over a number of years to try and figure out how we wanted to move forward, working with his plan and all the things that he has going. So we've kind of landed on a plan. And as we're going to start bringing those things forward, we thought it best if I presented kind of the, just the general overall structure of what you will be seeing probably for the next few years regarding the Capitol Theater, right?
He is miming.
He is miming. Okay, perfect.
The ongoing show.
Yes, 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 yes. So I was super excited about it.
You guys are the traveling.
I was like, what's Charlie going to do? This could be great. This could be great. I mean, this, what a duo, right?
You can wear your hat that changes.
I, I had all kinds of thoughts, but...
This isn't April 1st, right?
Yes. Oh, I had some thoughts that day, too. So what I really wanted to do was talk a little bit about what that overall plan is right now, so that when you see these things come forward, which we're going to bring forward, I think, the first meeting in May, that none of this is a surprise, and we can go into more detail at each of those meetings. So really, kind of what we're, what we're hoping to get out is just general overall understanding and/or concurrence from council that this is a good path forward and on how we want to approach this. So when Charlie approached me, he had a number of projects. He had the Fourth Street balcony, he has the seating and others, inside stuff that he wants to work on, as well as the facade. So he says, hey, Bill, how do I go about doing this? And I'm like, I don't know, this is facility stuff, I don't know. So what we landed on was, we needed a architect to tell us what those level of efforts even are. We don't even know what to spec out in a RFQ yet for that work, for each of those tasks. That's not necessarily my skill set. So what we decided to do was go out for an RFQ that said, stage one is do that work for us. Tell us what level of effort we need to do on each of these. And then we would, based on funding, based on some other things, and I'll go into in just a second, we would know how to proceed forward, okay? So we did that, and we found an architect firm that we want to bring forward in May that can do the first phase, and then we would then move into the subsequent phases. So the idea being that you would see a agreement, a master agreement, so to speak, with, and I can't remember, well, we don't have an agreement yet, we'll need to wait and tell you once we have it, with them that says, for the first order of work is this pre-design, is what we're calling it. And then after that, task orders would be brought forward that would do each of those subsequent phases. We just don't, we don't even at this point know which one we should be doing first, right? That's going to be dependent upon some funding options and donations and some other things that Charlie can get into if you want. So each of those things, we would be bringing forth as a separate item, and we would be bringing forth those with the funding scenario laid out for you at that time. What I can tell you right now is that we do have some PFD funds, some public facility district funds, to pay for this first stage. It's not going to be enough to pay for everything, and so there'll be subsequent, at those subsequent meetings, we will be sharing how those phases will be paid for. Part of it also is, and Charlie laid it out for me, and you know it's something if I got confused, but it, he, his, his funding is based on grant schedules and availabilities and when things are going to come open and those kinds of things. So he's kind of, that all is part of this as well, as well as it gives him time to do his public campaign to try and get other donations or other funds for the project. So it's very fluid, right? I don't have a lot of actual things to tell you right now, other than I'm going to be bringing a agreement, a master agreement forward that has those, those basically elements for task items in it. It's very fluid, and we will be sharing each of those in more depth then, okay? So, no action right now. I just want to lay that out for you. If you have any questions, we can answer.
So Charlie, what would you like to share? What are your, what are your thoughts?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Pointing out that August 11th of this year is the 50th anniversary of the fire that devastated the building. So we will be commemorating that, and this is building upon the fact that then, three years later, we have the 50th anniversary of the grand reopening of the space, the recommitment by this community to have this beautiful gem maintained in this facility. So that is the impetus for this timing, and then the structure beyond that was built on three separate biennium requests between, within the state, so we're not overlapping and duplicating our efforts along the way, and very specific funding agencies within the state that we're going to be reaching out to. So we've got a very specific structure, it's a long-term, multi-phased approach, and it's always in contingent upon having the money to move forward. So we have actually planted in a way that we can do that. And we are finishing up our first year of our feasibility study. We took a one-year feasibility study, and that's been getting tremendous response from the community. So the gem that is the Capitol Theater is being reinforced by all the conversations that we're having with some of the key stakeholders so far.
I would like to share that probably new seating is probably the last thing, the blast phase, when you get everything else done.
Possibly not.
Well, maybe not, so as I've been...
It may be that front door part.
I've been participating with the Yakima Symphony Orchestra Classical Series for about 40 years now, so I'll look forward to new seating, because they were 100 years old when we got them.
Did you, did you have, I went and took a tour last year with my son, it was a lot of fun. Did you learn about a ghost, too? That was a cool time.
That will certainly keep the kids entertained.
Yeah, yeah. Were you successful at all during this last session to, because I know that was one of the things you were pushing for some funding opportunities?
We have submitted to the state, we of course are still waiting final approval within the capital, capital allocations. In our original design for the plan, this biennium was not going to be a specific amount that we were requesting from the state, and yet we got a positive response from the legislators. We've gotten a hint that there is money in that budget that's to be approved, so we are getting a portion of that. So we've got a little bit of gravy in that regard, but of course, it's not gravy because we do need it. It means I don't have to get from as many other resources as I might, or I can tap those later.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Herrera?
This is a question for Mr. Preston. Talking about public facilities fund, is there any request or anything coming to council besides the Capitol Theater project that might be?
That's not my, I don't have anything to do with that fund.
Nope.
Part of the city's obligations for maintaining the facility, one of the revenue sources is the Public Facilities District, that the Board of Directors for that, which pays off the loan for the production center that was built 15 years ago. Those funds are maintained through a sales tax initiative. There's nothing else for the council to do with regard to that. We have made a request from the reserve, the catastrophic reserve that does exist in that fund, which can only be used for the Capitol Theater, to forward some of that money into, into an active account, so we can actually leverage some of these early expenses using those funds, funds that can't be used anywhere else, they couldn't be transferred into any other, so we don't compete with any other department.
What, what do you think the total cost will be for renovating? Do you know?
No, we don't. And that's, that's why we chose this method. We don't, I mean, don't have any idea.
We have thoughts.
What are the ballpark? What are you thinking?
Well, I'm ultimately assuming that it's nothing less than 12 million for a multi-phase front, back, center, full five, six-year approach, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So if we did this, you think it would be, make it attractive enough that you'd be able to be self-supporting?
Yeah. There's no self-supporting when it comes to nonprofits, that isn't a structure, it'll be continuing its support in the way that we have structured it so far. What I will share is that part of what we're looking to do is to make certain that this venue is providing the level of industry expectations that we've achieved so far. When I was hired 10 years ago, one of the primary things that I was given as a task was to secure this location in Yakima at the Capitol Theater as a pre-tour tech opportunity. Pre-tour techs is when the companies are going to start a show, they have to pull all the pieces together and work for a couple of few weeks in getting it pulled together. With the cost of renting space in New York City, it's far less attractive to do that in New York where they have traditionally done that, so a lot more tours are now doing that on the West Coast. Yakima is now one of the principal locations where they will do a pre-tour tech for, and we have four of them scheduled for this fall. That's the level of confidence that the producers have in what we can provide at a lower cost than what they would do in Seattle or Portland or somewhere else, but that, they literally have, if they're going to be doing a show in San Jose, in San Diego, they have done the tech in Yakima, because it's that worthwhile and they can trust us to do the work. But we have to do the improvements to keep up with the industry standards and the industry expectations. So that's part of what we're doing, is maintaining what we have and continuing to build the level of support and interest, so that everyone's enjoying the theater more and coming more often.
I think we all had a question.
So do you think that they, we'll get to the point where the donations and the support of those who attend the theater will be enough that the city doesn't have to put money into it?
The city only puts in the money that ultimately is responsible for the maintaining the space from a capital improvements. We do about $60,000 per year that comes from this PFD fund as well, as well as receiving funds from the PFD, from the lodging tax, and from cable franchise tax, of all things. Those three revenue sources, which are for the most part dedicated, are what the city uses to pay its obligations to hire me to run the space on your behalf. So my organization, this Capitol Theater Committee, is the nonprofit that runs the facility on behalf of the city which owns the building. So what your, what funds come in that are dedicated funds that can't be used in parks and every other place, those funds are coming to the Capitol Theater to pay the city's obligation for its own commitments. So it's not looking for any additional funds to do that, it's simply using the funds that are available to continue doing that while we do what we need operationally to bring in sponsorships and grants to bring in ever better shows. That's all.
If I'm understanding this correctly, then the way this would work, the city would authorize it, but the funds would not come from the city.
The only thing that's coming from the city right now is the PFD funds that have been approved, that, that amount of money of $500,000 is basically coming from one fund to another. But everything that we're doing to create this is so that we're not competing in the midst of all the work that you have to do for everyone else, we're not competing with that. We're looking at county, state, corporate, foundation, and individual gifts to cover the cost of this, and we've worked it so that the money that is coming through the city can only be used for the Capitol anyway.
Has everyone on the council taken a tour and looked at the plan?
Yeah, there's only one who I haven't gotten through yet, so.
Rick, you gotta get over there.
Quit asking questions.
No, he's more than welcome, this is why we have the individual tours.
He'll show you a ghost, dude.
I did go through it about 10 years ago, we did a show there.
Oh yeah, you definitely have to come back. There's a lot more going on.
Oh my gosh, the new curtains are...
Yeah, and I've only been here 10 years, so hey, you know, there's a lot more going on.
Would you say the tech aspect to keep up with the demands of the industry is probably one of the top priorities?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Most definitely, most definitely. I mean, the ROI, the return on investment opportunities are things like putting the terrace on the back end. It also provides security and safety as a cover for the loading dock, but it really does provide that return on investment, because it becomes an additional downtown, downtown space, and the indoor-outdoor venue can be very attractive. We're looking to put a center aisle down the middle of the theater, and that will be a great place if people wanted to use it over the summer for weddings, because like, if you're not religious and you want to have a nice secular wedding, here's a great opportunity. So there's ways in which we're building an attractive approach to this for the community, but maintaining the industry standards that we've been getting the success we've had so far, it's making certain that we can provide that. And there's been enough changes over the past 20 years that we're trying to address now.
Are we going to be able to, to get some other Broadway shows that we weren't able to get before, or would that take a lot more money to?
No, 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 the, well, we're always dealing with the fact that the capacity in this community for the number of performances is the greatest limiting factor. Because we could, they would gladly have us do three shows in a weekend, but we don't have the capacity in this region to pull that off. So we want to bring in the best shows, and the pre-tour techs, we're able to get the shows that normally we'd have to wait in three to five years on. I'll do a quick announcement here. We've got a show coming in which just won the Tony for Best Book and Best Music, a show called Suffs, and it's about the suffragette movement. It is going to be opening its first ever, coming off a Broadway tour in Seattle, they're doing the tech for three weeks in Yakima, in our hotel rooms, in our restaurants, and all that. So that show, we wouldn't be able to see for years, and it's an extraordinary show and with great music. That's a show that's possible because we're able to do those pre-tour techs, and that's one of the things that we're able to do distinctly, because we have the attention of the producers through, you know, that we can, we can do more than others can.
When you say capacity, are you saying like, the community's capacity to support the show, or are you saying like, just personnel capacity?
More specifically, I mean, we have, we are constantly welcoming and training new people to learn the backstage realm, but what we're looking at is, what's the total demand from patrons for how many shows? Because we can generally fill 70 to 80% for two shows on a Broadway touring show. Sometimes we'll get to 100%, but for the most part, we can rely on that 70 number to really, we can do that. We used to, back in the day, and I'm talking 25 years ago, used to have three performances and could fill those. But before I arrived, it had already been trimmed back to two, because ultimately, capacity, economic factors and the like are such that in this area, there isn't the demand for more than two at this time.
So we're not getting Hamilton.
They may take it, because it went, it goes on tour, it has to always refresh each year. So we oftentimes are getting shows that have toured before, but they're needing to refresh the tech. They, they're usually in for 10 days instead of three weeks, but yeah.
Yeah.
We thought I wouldn't have to say anything.
Yeah, good luck with that.
The other question that I wonder about is, I look at this facility, and does it even have one parking spot?
Okay, I don't use the P-word. That's not my problem.
We don't talk about parking.
What I do remind people in individual conversations is I do, I say, I know when you come to the theater, you know where you're going to park, and you don't tell anyone else, so no one else takes your spot. But y'all have it, and y'all know where you're going, so there actually is ample parking. And I always say to people, if you just simply go the block and a half down to in front of the police department, you've got a great parking lot there, we've got tons of space, we have no shortage of parking downtown, it's just people have an expectation in Yakima to walk, to walk one block, whereas if you go to Seattle, you're willing to walk six. Just a difference of mindset.
Yep.
We can all use the steps.
That's right.
Any others, council?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Thank you, Mr. Preston.
So I was going to throw out one more thing. Because Charlie is separate from the city, all the billing, all the agreement stuff, all of that stuff will be handled through the engineering office just like normal. So when I bring those things to you, I will be treating it just like I do every other capital improvement project that goes through the engineering office, so, and we'll work with him.
We'll look forward to that.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bravo.
Okay, where am I at here? Next on the agenda is 9B, which is a resolution authorizing a bid award and contract with Clifthorne Construction of our services at the terminal building. And Mr. Hodgman, our airport director is here to talk to us about that this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. It's always a pleasure to appear before you, and it is evening now. This is an exciting first step. We've been working for a while, a lot of people have contributed to this effort, so this is the first construction project, hopefully of several. This is the roof in the HVAC. This building has been leaking for years and years, and this is well overdue. And this will ultimately enable us to put the kitchen, commercial kitchen, back into operation in the adjacent space, but also paves the way for that upper level to be redeveloped for some other purposes.
Would one of those be the restaurant?
As a matter of fact, yes. So we're targeting 2027 for the restaurant at this point. It's very fluid, dependent upon the funding. That's always a challenge, we just heard a lot about that. But I'm also excited to tell you that day after tomorrow, we have the bid opening for the baggage claim project, which also includes a complete remodel of the downstairs bathrooms, a complete remodel of the downstairs bathrooms, one, a new, um, family bathroom, um, and a new family gathering space, specifically for people with, uh, small children. I think you're gonna find the finishes that the interior design team has come up with to be, hopefully, higher than your expectations. And what I want you to take away from that is that theme will carry throughout the building as we continue to do phase after phase after phase. So this is a very exciting time. It's been a tremendous amount of work. There've been a lot of support with funding from many different sources, and we hope they'll continue to support that. And, uh, look forward to inviting you once we've got a couple of these projects under our belt.
Just, just so I'm aware, you didn't put our face on any of the designs, the council's faces on it?
Correct.
Okay, great. I was like, they're not gonna like that, so.
He said it was a high-end.
Okay, good, great.
Well, I'm excited to see. I was hoping when I talked to you last week, I'd, I'd get a peek at it, but you didn't show me.
Well, they had already picked up all their stuff.
Okay.
You just missed it.
Just missed it.
Well, I'd say this too. This, this isn't the most visible, visible, uh, yeah, HVAC and a roof repair. Uh, it is very necessary for just trying to do anything.
Exactly. It's, it's not at all visible, except for the cranes that are gonna be there for a little bit. But just a reminder to the community that this summer, we're gonna be doing the sit test, so we're gonna be bringing in samples of furnishings and fixtures, and give the, the, the public an opportunity with QR code on their phone to tell us what they like about each one. Um, that we're trying to design this space for everyone. Not any, not one particular group, and we're working on something I think that'll be very representative of Yakima Valley. I'm not gonna reveal that just yet, but I, I think you'll find it very appealing.
Can I ask a question on a same airport?
You may. If the airport director's.
I know, I'm just wondering. The, um, the air day, the, the airshow day, or is there a date for that yet?
June seventh.
June seventh, great. Fantastic.
I know. It was so much fun last year. We'll look forward to that.
Yeah, my son loved it, so.
All right.
So our stainless steel baggage claim area is almost historical landmark, isn't it? People approach you and say you need to make it.
There's nothing historical in that building. We're not gonna be on the register, sorry.
We don't want it to be historical.
No.
Maybe it could be an art sculpture somewhere.
Yeah. Rob's gonna put it in his backyard.
I'm sure it's available at a very low cost to an interested party.
Make a multi-children's flag.
Scrap it for aluminum.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? If not, then clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Cliffthorne Construction to construct Phase One A upgrades in the terminal building at Yakima Air Terminal McAllister Field.
I would move to adopt the resolution.
I second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown to adopt the resolution, second by Councilwoman D'Ceo. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
D'Ceo?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
That's a seven-zero vote, and resolution is adopted. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Hodgman, for being here.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is an ordinance amending, um, to amend an ordinance to include a penalty for unlicensed ambulance operators. And tonight, we have Amanda Brusick, who is the, hello, Amanda, Assistant City Attorney.
Hi, thank you very much, and good evening. Um, I am here because our legal department was contacted by Chief Markham, um, to have an enforcement mechanism in place for, um, ambulance operators who are operating without a license. Um, our code currently doesn't have one, um, and there is a need for one, and that's why we're here today. Uh, the proposal is that it be a civil infraction with a penalty of five hundred dollars, and that's simply because most other jurisdictions, um, that's what reads in their codes. As far as a background on how the need for this came about, Chief Markham is here and can elaborate on that if need be.
I'd like you to, Chief, if you would.
Yeah.
Was this happening a lot?
Who's unlicensed, too? What does the license, what does that mean?
So let me clarify the licensing process. So the licensing process is for ambulance services in accordance to the Yakima Municipal Code 5.96. Not to be confused with license that you would be given from the Department of Health to operate a license under their direction, but there are specific criteria to be a licensed ambulance provider in the city limits, and we have excluded those that want to operate and do like interfacility transfers from medical facilities. Uh, that was done, um, shortly after the county entered into a contract for sole source provider for a single-source ambulance provider for the nine-one-one calls. We were made aware of incidences where another ambulance company that is not a nine-one-one provider was operating outside of the scope of what the municipal code allows them to do. They have since been sent a letter that we put them on notice that we've observed this and have been told so, but we didn't have a, an enforcement mechanism to what happens if they, just to decline, um, you know, being put on notice. And so that prompted to have some kind of a infraction to be an incentive not to continue to, with their practices. Um, so with that, um, basically what happened is they're not using nine-one-one, um, when they respond to an incident that potentially the fire department could be the closest agency to respond and assist them with it.
Any questions, counsel?
Is it county problem with their sole source?
No. If you recall, um, it had been two thousand and nineteen, if my memory serves me correct, the, the council approved and had a letter of support with the county to go out and get requests for proposals for a sole-source ambulance service. Uh, that took a couple of years because the first round came with some, um, some issues, so it was reposted, resubmitted. It had to do with the grading of it, um, and it took us a while to get there. Then we had to negotiate the contract with the county, um, on the terms and how the company that selected would support local fire departments in trauma area one, and there's a lot of stuff. Um, but, and then we got to where we're at. But AMR, who is a sole-source provider for nine-one-one emergency calls, is staffing now to appropriate levels that they're required to meet response time requirements in zones that are created throughout, uh, the majority of Yakima County. So we meet monthly to make sure that they adhere to those two.
So this, these other ambulance providers, they're, they're responding to calls even though they're not, they're not allowed to respond to these calls?
Not when it comes to an emergency nine-one-one call. What is happening, we believe, is that a company that, um, like, let's say, an assisted living facility that may have a contract with them for interfacility transports, calls and say, says, "We have a patient that needs to be checked, and they need to go to the ER." But their symptoms are of the level that really they should have, this call should have been through nine-one-one, and not just to, they need to be transferred to the hospital for, uh, evaluation. If that were to happen, which we believe it has, then the ambulance company should be notifying nine-one-one, "Hey, we have a call at this facility. This is, um, the type of call." It would be triage as to the level of response that would be required. That's not happening. And so, you know, they're just, they're just responding emergency to the call, handling it, and then transporting the patient to the hospital if necessary.
So as I'm understanding this, you have assigned a contract to one company, and they're gonna provide a hundred percent of the ambulance service?
They have been, yes.
And you don't want competition?
What's the last part?
That's, that's what the county has done for county services, countywide service.
For every city, every county, everywhere.
Right.
So the, the, the possible infractions are gonna be people who are licensed ambulance operators, but they just didn't get the nine-one-one call, so they shouldn't have responded?
They're not licensed to operate within the city of Yakima.
So we only allow one company to operate in the city of Yakima?
As a, as defined as an ambulance service provider.
This would be for more emergent services and not just to trans, transmit from home to, to services or
Yes.
between facilities.
And does, does the city have any legal liability if someone who does transport someone and the patient dies or something? Is there anything like that?
No, I mean, it, the, well, I think, they're, both companies are licensed under the Department of Health, and so they carry all the equipment. They have their, you know, the suitable personnel with the right certifications and all that stuff. This is just a matter of process that we created a sole-source EMS provider for the benefit of all the communities that are serviced in trauma area one, which is basically all of north Yakima County, clear down to about Granger. Um, and so there's not this competition of who's the closest ambulance and monitoring where they're at as they're moving out around through the city, and we're keeping track of them through their automated vehicle locators and stuff like that. We call one company, they send the closest unit, and they're held accountable for their response times.
That kind of removes the responsibility for city staff to be doing the research and anytime an incident is called in, and then, to me, that would delay services to have to do that, so.
Yes, we're not shopping around for ambulance companies.
So what happens if there's a major tragedy and the contracted provider is overwhelmed? Do you just let the people sit until they can get around to it?
Like a m- mash casualty incident?
Yeah, where you needed maybe twenty ambulances, and AMR only has a limited number. They can't fill the need. Nobody else can go in, no matter what. Is that what we're saying?
No. So the benefit of that is when you have a mash casualty incident, a lot of the rules, um, are exempt because it is such an incident. And so that means we could have ambulance providers from fire department-based EMS throughout the Yakima County and counties that are close to us, because quite frankly, there aren't twenty ambulances in Yakima County, period. So we would be reaching as far out as we could, um, to get the resources that we need to, provided for a mash casualty incident. So, and we could use those in that incidence if they were wanting to respond to it. We would use all available resources at hand, including, um, the ability to use school district buses, uh, that kind of stuff for, for patients that are what we consider green patients that are walking and can be self-ambulatory.
Have, have you talked to this other ambulance provider that has been?
We put them on notice. They actually appear to, uh, the monthly, uh, response time meetings with the other company, and they are aware of what's going on and what the rules are.
In a sense, basically, this is going to evolve where we're only gonna have one ambulance company that'll be, be able to bid the service.
That has already happened.
Yes, that's not this.
Yeah.
It wasn't our decision.
It was the county's decision.
What, what this, the definition of the ambulance service provider that was amended several months ago allowed for another ambulance company that was already in business here in the city to continue to, to do business, but in a limited scope of work as far as, um, not doing the nine-one-one service providing step. There are still plenty of interfacility transfers within the city, and then also from the hospital in Yakima to outline hospitals in, you know, Seattle and, and so on. So the other company that's now primary focus is nine-one-one response times, has to, you know, be sure that they're staffed well enough that they can provide that service and focus less on the interfacility transports, which this company can do. It's complicated.
Sounds like it.
But it is also much needed for the betterment of the total EMS system in the city of Yakima.
For the efficiency, the functioning of the system, yeah.
Correct. We also have BLS and ALS ambulances running, so you're not always getting a paramedic to an EMS call when it isn't necessarily needed.
Right, and we did that.
We've talked about that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments by counsel? If not, then clerk, would you read the resolution? Or the ordinance, excuse me?
This is an ordinance amending the city of Yakima Municipal Code Chapter 5.96 ambulance services to include a penalty for operating without a license.
I move that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman, um, D'Ceo, and a second by Councilwoman Berg to, uh, pass the ordinance. We'll need a roll call vote, please.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
D'Ceo?
Yes.
Glenn?
No.
Herrera?
Yes.
All right, so that is six to one, so the motion passes and the ordinance is passed. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, chief. Thank you, Amanda, appreciate that.
Thank you.
We move now now to nine D, which is an ordinance amending the city of Yakima Municipal Code Chapter 3.15, and we will have, oh, I'm sorry, we just did that one. An ordinance to the Yakima City Municipal Code Chapter 3.15 to accommodate the leasing of vehicles. And our interim financial director, Mike Bailey, is here to talk to that.
Good evening. My pleasure to be here. This is, uh, I think catching up with an action the council took late, late last year, authorizing the leasing of vehicles. Um, and the code is recommended to be refreshed so that, uh, it's clear to an auditor who might appear in the next couple of months that indeed the council is, is, uh, authorizing leases to be a form of acquisition of vehicles for the city's purposes. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but it's fairly straightforward, uh, with, specifically with respect to that issue.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel?
So this is the leasing program that was, last year, we kind of initiated it.
Correct. Uh, council considered it last September.
Any other questions? If not, then would you read the ordinance, please?
This is an ordinance amending the city of Yakima Municipal Code Chapter 3.15 to accommodate the leasing of vehicles.
I'd move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Second motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, and a second by Councilwoman D'Ceo to pass the ordinance. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
D'Ceo?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, motion passes seven-zero, and the ordinance is passed. Thank you, counsel. Thank you. Who just came up here?
Mike.
Mike, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
He's right there.
He's right front of us.
I see you. I was looking. All right. So we, that's the end of the department items. We have a city manager update?
Yes, I do. So mayor, council, uh, good evening. I am excited to share that we have a brand-new finance director starting tomorrow, and I have Mike Bailey, our interim here, who might be able to help me with this one. I just want to first say who it is. You won't see him in person tonight. He doesn't start till tomorrow, but his name is Craig Warner. He comes, uh, from Yakima County, is very familiar with our community, thirty-seven years at the county, um, lot of experience with budget challenges like we are facing right now. So I'm excited to have him on board tomorrow, and I believe, um, Mike has known him also for a number of years, so could maybe, they have some common experience.
We do, indeed. Yes, I've known Craig for a long time. Craig's been very involved in the State Finance Officers Association. In fact, has, uh, relatively recently, uh, completed his term as president, uh, which often hosts his conferences and training meetings and whatnot here in Yakima. So I've known Craig for, uh, many years, uh, as a professional peer, and very highly regarded in the profession, and, uh, it's great to see that he's continuing his service to the community, now more focused on the city as opposed to the broader county. But I think the city will be well-served, and commend the manager for being able to lasso Craig from retirement.
I was gonna say, it's not often we steal someone from the county, so.
Thank you. We appreciate hearing that, and we're excited to have Craig with us, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, um, that takes us to other business, and as we open up other businesses, I'd like to say one thing. We have two new, um, captains in our police force. One is Chad Janice, who understands the wave just, and is Matt Sutton here?
He's not.
He is not, all right. We just want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next item under other businesses is, um, I would like to move to reconsider the ordinance amending Yakima Municipal Code Chapter 12.01, adding section 12.01 point, twelve point oh one zero eight zero regarding violations.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by myself as the mayor, and a second by Councilwoman Berg, um, to move forward on this, uh, recommendation. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven-zero. Thank you.
Now we have to, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but you can do something.
Now we can reconsider.
Right, now you can go back to your discussion about it.
Do we need to read the whole, the whole motion at the time?
You're gonna have to re, re, have the clerk reread the ordinance, and then this is an opportunity to, uh, continue debate on the original motion, and then there, there's the original proposal, and then there can be a motion after debate and reading of the ordinance title.
So I'll start the debate part, and that is that, um, when we took a vote on it, the last, the last business meeting, there was a lot of different discussion. There were different ideas, and I think there was some confusion in terms of what was actually happening. They're simply adding something that is already in place, and we just wanted to put it connected with that ordinance rather than doing them separate. So that's, that's why I brought it forward, to reconsider and...
So that was the one that Bill Preston presented that we voted down? Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes.
I didn't.
Neither.
I would like to ask Bill if you could come up, please.
Come on, Bill.
I just need clarification. Um, in your opinion, I was thinking about it, would a ceiling on the fees be appropriate?
Um, I was thinking about that after you guys brought it up. Um, and possibly. Uh, there's, there's some nuances because the same ordinance now affects our right-of-way permits, which tend to be yearly permits, right? We renew them every year. So there's opportunities to not renew them. And, and, so, so that's one avenue or type of permit. Excavation permits are usually short-term. Um, they're a week, couple of weeks, a day sometimes, so that may or may not, that ceiling may or may not even necessarily... or may not even necessarily affect, right? And then there's engineering permits, which tend to be more long-term, and they affect our, our immediate infrastructure or long-term infrastructure. So, in order to do a cap, I would probably want to take a look at how that, each of those different type of permits would be affected and what would make sense.
Yeah, I agree. I just, the way I interpreted it last time was it's, could be an unlimited, just if they went 400 days of violations.
Yeah.
Right, is that correct?
Yeah, um, yes, although the work would be done, so the, the cure for that would simply be, go get $160 permit and you're done. You know, why, why, why take a $500 penalty for this? So, there are some, there's ways to cure this without getting into tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right, okay.
Doesn't need to go there.
They got to 400 days. It's, they just walked off the job site or something.
Big project. It's the airport project.
I hope you didn't hear that, Mr. Hodgman.
The question I have about it is, why don't we just do a stop work order? If somebody's violating the terms of the permit, why don't you say, hey, you gotta stop work because you're not doing it right?
So, we do that. I have, I have kicked them off the road as well, and that works in a, but it doesn't necessarily correct the, the infraction, because then what happens when they show up tomorrow? Then they, I kick them off again, and they show up the next day. And then they show up and I don't see them, so then they do the work. Or, they just don't go get a permit. They just say, well, it's easier just to not get, you know, beg for forgiveness rather than ask permission, that kind of thing. And we did get.
That's never happened in the city of Yakima.
No, 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 nobody's ever done that. And I did get a couple of calls after the last one, it's like, what does this mean? Does that mean we need permits? And I'm like, nope, you still need permits. Their code says this.
I think it's kind of a deterrent, more than anything. It's a deterrent to cause people to think about how to do it the right way to begin with, rather than being fined for making a shortcut of some kind, or bringing hazard to the sidewalk, or, yeah.
Yeah, it, it just, it, it provides us the opportunity to enforce what you folks have deemed our ordinances to be, right? We don't, and we need that, we need some tool to do that.
Right.
Besides just kicking them off the road. Because sometimes they're not on the road, right? What if they?
We could send Captain Janice after them.
I walked out there the other day, they sent me some pictures of, somebody replaced a sidewalk panel. Don't know when they tore it out, don't know when they put it back. No, let me rephrase that. We know when they tore it out, and then all of a sudden it was back. It's like, I don't know, right? So, there's things like that that we need to be able to address, and so, that's what this is about.
Can, can I ask a question on that, then? So, in regard, let's take the sidewalk panel, for example. So, I, I've had a few businesses that have been, like, their, the permit of, I don't know, occupation or whatever to start in, has been held up because there was something on a sidewalk outside their building that they didn't know about, and so then they had to, like, shave the, the concrete down so that it would no longer be like a trip hazard outside. But it took them nine and a half months for the city to actually tell them that, at that info, and, and I'm like, you had to go out and shave the sidewalk down? Yeah. So, my point is, though, is if we're, if we're trying to enforce these mechanisms, is it, I mean, that business, for example, I'm like, when they go out to check on it, oh yeah, you did your job great. Like, there's, it doesn't equate the cost that we're assigning to that, the inspection or the, the infraction piece necessarily. You know, he's like, they didn't even come and inspect it. They called him, said, did you get it done? Yes, great, your permit's good. Didn't even look at it. And he's like, so, it took nine months for me to get through these things? So, I'm just trying to say, it's like, if we're going to do the inspection and the kicking stuff off, and like, might need to actually warrant the, the, the time.
So, um, not a popular comment, maybe, but, um, uh, I've been before you before, and I have eight people.
Nine.
Only in, in engineering.
Huh?
I'm sorry, I only have eight people in engineering.
Yeah.
And I have 400 miles of road, and thousands of feet of infrastructure to inspect, and unfortunately, it is very difficult for us to get to everything timely. The best mechanism for that would be a larger staff, but I don't have it, and we can't afford it. I get that. So, we prioritize the biggest benefits for the expenditures that the engineering department utilizes. And sometimes that's not the shaving of the sidewalk, but sometimes it is. And we can do those sometimes on drive-bys or other smaller things. We, we don't have to get out, we can just drive by and see, did they fix it or did they not? So, it all depends on the, the actual work taking place.
It would just be interesting to see if, if, if it's that easy on a drive-by on some of these, like, permit applications or different things, then maybe the, maybe the cost on, on those applications needs to be a lot less.
That's, and something that could be looked at?
You know, I don't know, just an idea, because I'm like, if it, all it takes is you to drive by and go, yeah, you did your job, great. That, that was 42 seconds, had a stoplight.
There's two, there's, there's two parts to those, to all those permits, right? Is there's the application fee, so then there's, that covers the taking in and the, the receiving of that application, and sometimes it recou, accounts for the, the review, but oftentimes not. And then there's the, the inspection side, which may be five minutes, or it may be, you know, on an EXC, we might have to go out there, excavation permit, excuse me, then we might have to go out there a couple, using my own terminology, I knew what I meant.
It's acronyms.
We might have to go in there a couple of times, right, to see in stages as they did it. So, that's not a, a five minutes. And so, rather than have a 30-page permit application that covers all the different types of things, we tried to consolidate that down to something that's reasonable, manageable, and kind of distributes that burden a little more fairly.
Cool. Yeah, I'm fine. I just had a question on that, that's all.
Any other questions or discussion, council?
When you have the issue of, we don't have enough staff to handle all the permits that are required, does, does that indicate that there's a possibility, maybe there are some things that we should stop requiring permits for, just to allow things to flow more smoothly?
Um, no, not even remotely. So, the, the, what you're suggesting is that the infrastructure improvements that are being done for the city, that the city ultimately has responsibility over, would not be done according to our current standards or inspected to our current standards. That is really unacceptable. I would rather have them wait two weeks to do that work and make sure that the community who is utilizing those resources, whether it be an individual business getting a water meter installed, or a sewer tap, or some of the other infrastructure items, be done correctly than to, in the interest of expediency, to not have those things inspected or required to permit.
Yep.
Remember, there used to be a time that individuals, you know, the city was responsible for anything in the city right-of-way, but that isn't the case anymore, is it?
Uh, I.
Just like, I, we had a, I knew of a case where there was a sewer line break where it went into the sewer pipe, and so the water was coming out of the pipe and then just kind of winding its way in and then creating a hole and a void and stuff. And when the city was made aware of it, they said, oh, that's the responsibility of the property owner. And the property owner said, oh, I'm not gonna do anything about it. It works now, so I'm just gonna leave it. What do you do in a situation like that?
So, in general, it's, 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 the line is actually pretty clear. There is a main trunk line, and then, so whether it be water or sewer, and then there's branches that come off of that that feed the local residents or businesses or whatever is out there. There is a point that, that usually it's the meter, that everything on one side is the city's, everything on the other side is the property owners. And it all depends on how that kind of is set up, and so, in a situation like that, my guess would be that it was on the property side of the meter, which could have been in the road, for whatever reason, which is why it was leaking in the road, and it would have been the property owner's responsibility. But generally speaking, if it's ours, we take care of it. I don't know of any, well, not generally, it is ours, we take care of it. I don't, I know of none in the four years I've been here where we have not taken care of any of those issues that are on, that are our responsibility.
Anything else, council?
Nope.
All right, clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
This is an ordinance.
An ordinance, thank you.
Amending the City of Yakima Municipal Code, Title 12, Development Standards, Adding Section 12.01, 080, Regarding Violations.
I'd move to pass the ordinance.
A second, then.
So, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilwoman DCO to pass the ordinance. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
DCO?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
A seven zero vote and the ordinance is passed.
That was a.
Thank you, council.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, your turn.
Okay. Uh, so, council, in front of you is a resolution in regards to cruise nights.
Me too, ask to suspend the rules.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna get there. I, I got you. Um, okay, so I, I would like to make a mo, or I would like to, I move to suspend the rules so we can have a discussion about this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Council, Councilwoman Berg to suspend the rules to look at this, at this resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, let's move forward, please.
Okay. So, Mayor and I met with the, some of the car clubs. We recently passed, I don't know, it was probably a month ago, a ordinance changing the cruise ordinance to allow the dates to be set by resolution. Well, we haven't set the dates by resolution, and summer's quickly approaching, and our next meeting is May 6th, because we have a city-county meeting at the next one. And so, I met with the group, we met with the group, and kind of came up with some dates, had a great conversation about how we can partner with the car clubs a little bit better, strategize for the future, but also looking at, you know, they're fully aware of the budget constraints going into 2026, and so, trying to work together to solve those problems going forward. This, because, you know, we, we did pass a, a budget in '25, and I, and I told them, I was like, we, we're gonna have to have a conversation about '26, but for '25, try not to change a whole lot of things right off the get-go, and try to keep people used to what it was, is, these are the same dates that it would have been in the ordinance. The only shift is, because it's hot and it stays brighter outside later, everyone gets to experience the wonderful summers of Yakima, that they wanted to shift it back, all, all the car clubs wanted to shift it back just one hour, and, and so we said, well, let's try that. So, this is that resolution, and it sets the dates and the times, and that's, that's what I got, unless you have anything else to add.
So, one of the things we're trying to do is encourage the car clubs to form their own citizen group, so that they can meet periodically throughout the year to talk about themselves, how the events went, any changes they'd like to make, and then they can bring it back to council, that if we do want to make any changes next year, we can do that by resolution easily, rather than having to change an ordinance, which is why we changed the ordinance to begin with, to give us flexibility. So, we can take note of any issues that arise in, in the summer, and things that might need to be different next summer. So, that's the purpose of, of the resolution.
And apparently, there's like 20-plus car clubs. We spoke with three. And so, trying to get all of them moving in a direction, I mean, some of you are newbies on this council, when you start talking cruising, you'll have 500 people crammed into this room. And so.
Different opinions.
Yes, yes, and, you know.
Well, this would put the, the burden of that discussion and what would work for all of the car clubs in agreement any one summer, it would put the burden on them to come, the city with a plan for any changes in resolution nearby years we go along. And there may be some things for the city we find out don't work well, and so we go to make a resolution here. Next year, we may change some of that.
Yeah. In a partnership and being able to really make this, so not everyone in the community is losing their mind on stuff that doesn't need to be. So, anyways, that's, that's the resolution, and again, for the, the expedited nature of it is mostly because they're trying to get these dates out as well to the public, because people are starting to plan, I mean, they've already started to plan their summers, but they really want to get these things out quickly.
Right. And the car clubs have agreed that they are gonna be themselves in planning things, going out and working with the downtown businesses and other people who may be interested in being open later in the evening on those particular nights, or maybe some connected events they want to do on the side, and that will all be on them.
Yeah.
I'm just more concerned about the cost for the police during these nights, because they have a lot of overtime, so if we can eliminate doing that, that'd be great.
We did talk about that with them as well, and we're gonna have another conversation with, like, Chief whenever he gets back, and being able to, you know, look at, do we need the full presence that we're at? I don't know, like, just looking at the different options. But they also mentioned, too, is they're, they're trying really hard to make, that's part of the reason by trying to unite all the car clubs, is so that they can help educate their folks, and like, hey, you, you can't do that stuff, you gotta just keep, nope, you can't do that stuff. So, it was a great conversation.
The other thing we talked about is the expense of having overtime with police, and a couple of the car club members said, hey, we'd be, we'd be happy to, you know, do something to contribute toward that, so we can maybe look for that as well, some support from them, paying for some on overtime, because it's a lot cheaper for them to participate that, that any duty they want to, than if we have to go back to permitting it, they're gonna have to pay a lot more money, so.
Yeah. Anyways, if there's any questions?
Cruise on.
All right.
This isn't quite revenue neutral, then?
Nope.
No.
No.
No. But what is revenue neutral?
What is revenue?
And what is revenue at this moment? So, I would, I would move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilwoman Berg to adopt the resolution before us tonight. Would you read the resolution first, please?
This is a resolution setting the dates and time for open cruising events on Yakima Avenue for the summer of 2025.
Thank you.
Byers?
Yes.
DCO?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right. The motion passes seven zero and the resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. Is there any other business for council this evening?
I have a few.
Oh, seriously?
Yeah, they're just to add to agendas. So, I, I would like to, I, I move to add a discussion about surplus properties that the city owns. Any properties that is obviously not a park or something that is developed to a study session in the future.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilwoman Berg to have a future discussion with council on.
Surplus properties.
Surplus properties, thank you very much.
Yeah, on undeveloped city properties.
All those in, all those in favor, please say aye. All of those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes seven zero, thank you, next.
Yeah, I have another one. I, I would like to, we haven't talked about a downtown master plan in probably, I think the last one is like 2012 or 2013. And I think for our businesses and our community, if we really want to develop the downtown, the mill site, all these other things, that we, we gotta, we have to refresh that plan and have an idea of what we're doing. So, I would like to, I move to add to a future study session a discussion about the downtown master plan and the process to updating that.
A second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman D'Ceo to add a future study session to have discussion about updating the downtown plan.
So you mentioned at the beginning, the mill site, and then you didn't...
That's extraneous information, we're just voting to get it on the agenda, and then you can talk about it. Sorry. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah.
Just 'cause.
Motion is six-zero and passes, thank you.
Do you have a question?
After council session?
Yeah, after council session.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. And then, the, the last two is, sorry, guys, I just, I'm sorry, I just, there's things in my head, I have to get them out.
It's my daughter's birthday, hurry up.
Is, a, a while ago, we, we talked about a fifty-fifty sidewalk program where the owners of the property and the city and what that looks like. And, uh, I know Scott had put a lot of work into those things. I would like sometime in a study session to get an update on where that program is. So I would move to add to a future study session an update on the fifty-fifty sidewalk program.
A second.
Did you second? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman D'Ceo to add a future study session to have an update on the fifty-fifty sidewalk program. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, thank you.
Okay, last one. I think it was last fall, we, we talked about a CDBG, whatever, five-year plan process. And, uh, we had hired a consultant to help us do this thing. We hadn't had an update on that, and I don't know where it is. I don't know what's going on with it, uh, but I'm sure we need to probably get on with it. So, I, I would, I would move to get an update on that five-year plan for those dollars at a future study session.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Berg to add a future study session to have a, a discussion update on the five-year CBDG program.
The plan.
Plan. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Staff is gonna be busy, thank you.
That's all I got.
Alright. If there's no other new business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I... I will move to adjourn to our next council meeting, which is a...
Study session.